Y'all ready?
You're ready.
Okay, everybody's, everybody's mics working? Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, we're calling to order a regular meeting of the Jackson City Council, City of Jackson, Mississippi, June the 17th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We have with us today to deliver the invocation Reverend Ernest Smith of True Believers in Christ Missionary Baptist Church, Ward Three, and following the invocation, we will then stand, we will, we will be standing and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which I am going to ask Mr. Foot if he would please lead us in that today. Thank you.
Good evening, all minds on Christ. O him the Father, we thank you for this night, and we pray that everything be did, done, said here tonight, that you will get the glory out of it. Search our hearts and our minds, and let us say what you would have us to say and do here tonight. For us in your darling, this Sunday, we pray and say, amen? Amen.
Thank you so much, Reverend Smith, and then also thank you, Mr. Foot. Colleagues, are there any introductions or any announcements before we get started? Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, I want to open and close this meeting in honor of Menadet O'Baner, that worked in IT, that has, you know, that is no longer with us, and want to just pray for her and her family.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Hans County Supervisor Wanda Evers that are with us, and also the new Councilman-elect for Ward Seven, Mr. Kevin Parkinson. There you go. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
Well, Ms., it's, Ms. LaShay Brown Thomas, who is the Councilwoman-elect for Ward Six, has, has also entered, she's sitting up here also, so I want to recognize her also. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to open and close the meeting in honor of Ms. Anna Leah Jolly, who is a student at Bell Haven, but she's also Miss Capital City, and Sunday, and Saturday night, she was crowned Miss Mississippi of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Stokes, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Madam President. Could we open in honor of Mrs. Marjorie Cameron Thorne, Mr. Leo Mason, Deacon Ellis Montgomery Hubbard, Mr. James Hawkins, Mr. Levy, Mr. Jimmy D. Johnson III?
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, and I really appreciate your remembering, Mr. Hawkins, what a gift he was to our city and to our school district. And I have one, and I'm, I'm probably going to cry again, colleagues.
All right, all right.
But, so a few minutes ago, I was in my office calling my daughter, saying, could you please go feed the dog? I forgot to do that before I left and came down here. I walk outside and here she is. And so she came to be supportive on my last meeting, so, thank you, honey. And her sweet husband, Koi Garrison, so.
Did he feed the dog?
No, the dog's still not fed. So, okay, so with that, colleagues, thank you very much. We are going to go on now to, we have three public hearings, colleagues, and so clerk, would you please get item two on the floor?
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of Pillars Court from Ludlow Avenue to Pillars Court to Mrs. Olivia Broach Drive.
Okay, colleagues, we're not going to vote on this at this moment, I'm going to ask if there is anyone here to speak in favor of this item.
Yes.
Mr. Stokes, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, ma'am.
My name is Jesse Harris.
Oh, please turn the mic on, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jesse Harris, I'm Miss Olivia Broach's son. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today, but I want to thank everyone that was involved in making this possible for her. I remember at the age of nine, we moved to Pillars Court, so we've been in Georgetown all our life, and I've watched through the years that my mom is the oldest individual living in Pillars Court. So I just want to thank everybody that made this possible. I want to give a special thanks to Kenny Stokes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this item? All right, with that, colleagues, let's go ahead and go to item number 23, and we will take this item up. Clerk?
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of Pillars Court from Ludlow Avenue to Pillars Court to Mrs. Olivia Broach Drive.
So move.
We have a motion and a second, any comments, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. Miss Broach is, what, 80s, 90s? 90 years young, has one son that's a police officer. She's an example of motherhood, where the senior person in the community is the mother for all the children. She helped raise all the neighborhood children, and during her lifetime, we just wanted to let her smell her roses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Any other comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries with a vote of seven zero, thank you. We'll go back now to item number three, clerk.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of High Street from President Street to West Street to Senator Johnny E. Walz Jr. Drive.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Okay, anyone here to speak in opposition of this item? All right, with that, colleagues, let's go on to item number 24.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of High Street from President Street to West Street to Senator Johnny E. Walz Jr. Drive.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. Senator Walz was also a judge, and he comes from the Mississippi Delta, but he helped Jackson all he could. Members of the legislature, you know, all of them are not bad, even though people try to make it seem like Jackson, the legislature, we always fighting each other. A lot of members of the legislature have done a lot to try to help Jackson over the years, and Johnny Walz was one of those, when he served as the senator, who been over backwards to help their city. And to leave the legislature become a judge in the Delta was special. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in, in favor? It carries with a vote of seven zero, thank you. Clerk, let's go back now to item four.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of the block bounded by Carlisle Whitworth Fortification and Monroe Streets to Bill McCarthy Square.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item? I know Ms. Dawn Buck is here from New Stage, and you're in the rah rah corner, I know. Is there anyone else from the New Stage? If y'all would just raise your hands, if y'all don't want to come say anything. I said a lot last time about this, the last meeting, but I think we all know that without Bill McCarthy, we would not have New Stage Theater, that has meant so much to our city over the years. It is, it was transformative theater at the time, and it continues to be transformative theater today. And Bill has been the backbone of that, along with some others as well, of course, but he really has been quietly in the background this whole, all these 59 years of a very successful theater program for our city and for our students and for our children. And so I really am thrilled to have this item on the agenda. And so with that, clerk, could we please go to item 25?
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of the block bounded by Carlisle Whitworth Fortification and Monroe Streets to Bill McCarthy Square.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, it carries with a vote of seven zero, thank you very much, colleagues. Okay. Bill deserves that applause. All right, I've been also asked to go ahead and move up item number 64, because there are members of the family here for that particular item. So clerk, would you please go, this very heavy book, let's go to the very back of it and go to item 64.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, strongly encouraging Department of Defense and the Navy to reverse its position to remove the name Mega Evers from the USNS Mega Evers Christian in 2011.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, Mr. Banks?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I, I think everybody here knows the importance and the trailblazer that Mega Evers was, you know, not just his civil rights, but he also was a veteran. He landed on the shores of Normandy for D-Day, and, you know, former Secretary of the Navy Ray Mabus invited the family up in Merrily Evers in 2011, Christian to ship. And, you know, it's just unfortunate that our politics have gotten, you know, to the place of moving away people such as Mega Evers. It was rough enough that they took his name out of the Arlington Cemetery, but this is even a bigger blow. And so his niece is here, we did talk to other members of the family, but I knew that his niece could be here. And I'm going to ask the supervisor, Evers, can come up and, Madam President, I'd share a couple of words, and anybody else in the family that might walk in, but.
Good evening, everyone. It's kind of a sad situation for the Evers family. My uncle fought in war, not just for us, but for everybody. He was a man, that was a family man. His wife lost her husband, his children lost their dad. We lost our uncle, people around him lost a friend, somebody that would stand up for him. And I'm saying this today, and I'm just saying, how could anybody sleep if they would read the history, the life of Mega Wiley Evers, what he stood for in America, not just in Jackson, Mississippi? It's heartbroken for me, because I was raised by a man, Charles Evers, that loved his brother. My dad loved his brother. He sat with Donald Trump and told this man how much his brother meant to him, what his brother stood for. So, we are fighting this, and I'm making arrangements to go to Washington, because I have to see this man face to face. My dad sat with him, we honored him down here when we opened up the Civil Rights Museum, and you do this to a man that fought for our country, it doesn't matter whether you're black or white. It's a matter of what you have, what you doing now for a man that lost his life in his driveway in front of his children, in front of his wife, a man that fought in the war for us. You took his name off the Arlington Cemetery, now you're trying to take his name off a ship. The Evers family, and a lot of family, especially Mr. Kenneth I. Stokes, we are not going to tolerate it. So, it's nothing but the devil working, and we're going to let him play in his playground, and after that, it's over. But I'm telling you this, the daughter of Rena Evers and the niece of Wanda Evers is not going to allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, just one, one quick announcement along that same line, the Meggers and Merrily, Merrily Evers Institute and the Mississippi Voters Action Fund, they're going to have an event. It's going to be June the 27th through June the 29th, it's going to be held here at the Convention Center, and it's to celebrate Mega Evers' lifelong fight for democracy, justice, and youth leadership. Again, that's on the 27th through the 29th of this month at the, at the Convention Center complex. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Madam President, I want to thank Councilman Banks for placing this item on the agenda, and I hope that council members and alums all over the state will place a similar item wherever city or town they live in, because this is extremely important. Then the government, we speak through our votes, and we record our votes. My father was in the Navy, and he used to always brag about the Navy. My brother, my second brother was in the Navy, and I had the opportunity to stand with him in my younger days in Jacksonville, Florida. He was at Caesar Field, he was on the carrier, something I'd never seen before in my life. Can you imagine a young man from Jackson, Mississippi seeing a carrier? And the first thing people remember, those planes took, the wings took in, and I, I, it just amazed me to see that. And the Navy is, is a special place, it's, it's, in my mind, it's beyond this nonsense. Now, some people would think the Army or something like that, but, but not the Navy. And I'm just glad that the Evers family realized that this is a great honor to have a ship in the world's number one military named for him, and they're going to fight to keep that name. I, I don't blame you, and a lot of people support that with you. You know, the military's always been a place where there was no racism practiced. I know something, well, once upon a time, well, a lot of things changed. And I tell anybody, when you own those Navies or them submarines, only one you see is a brother or sister who're trying to make sure they all live together, and they all survive. So to put division at that stage of life is wrong. And again, Councilmember Banks, thank you for the leadership, because some of us may have put it on later, but it need to be on now, because we need to let it be known how we feel as a city, as a state, and as a country. Thank you so much, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, I just want to add, if the clerk can add this to the note, not to amend, but just add this to the note of this item, Madam President, that is, that a copy of this be sent to the Mississippi Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, to the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, to the Congressional Black Caucus, to the African American Association of Mayors, and to the Evers family in this order, Merrily Evers, Rena Evers, and Wanda Evers.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Is there any other comment on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries with a vote of seven zero, thank you very much. All right, and thank you, Evers family, for being here with us tonight. All right, we're moving now to public comment, colleagues, we only have one tonight. Mr. Zach Service, I don't have to go through this bill with you, you know exactly what to do. Three minutes. The mic's already on.
Thank y'all. Zach Service, resident, Ward Three, and I do want to second what was said. It, it's completely unacceptable, the idea of removing Mr. Evers' name off of the vessel. It doesn't make any sense to me, actually, my, my father also served in the Navy, Mr. Stokes, so I guess we do share that in common, and I, I just don't see, I understand what the new administration is trying to accomplish, but I don't understand how that serves the purpose of it. And I think that every single one of us needs to call our state and our US congressmen and our senators, and let them know that we want to make sure that it gets to President Trump, that we are not in agreement with this. President Trump called Mr. Evers a great man when he, you know, commemorated the museum, so I would like to see him back that up by preserving his name on that vessel. Now, I want to ask, is Mr. Malabeca here? Is it true that a trip to Florida for the US Conference of Mayors with the mayor and members of the cabinet was approved with, for taxpayer finances to be spent on that trip? Is that true, sir? Within these next 10 days? Is that yes?
Point, point of order. Yeah, point of order, and, and I understand, but if this was to be taken up to council, this body would call a hearing, and that kind of question would be allowed. But this is an actual session for public comments to address this body, because it's the city council's meeting. But any other question would have to be done in another format.
Okay, well, the only reason I say this is because I know it's been said that I've spread misinformation at times, so I didn't want to make a statement without knowing if it was true. So I'll just say this, it has been brought to my attention allegedly that Mayor Lumumba is about to take a vacation, paid for by taxpayer dollars, for the US Conference of Mayors in Florida within these next 10 days. And he's also bringing members of his cabinet supposedly, like Ms. Amari and Ms. Faith Payne, and also, I believe, a secretary. Now, I just don't see how that is a wise use of taxpayer funds. I mean, we have an open position for the festival coordinator for the National Folk Fest that is woefully underpaid, $25,000 max for a position at six months' contract, $1099 full-time as a professional event production, that is just far, but it's no wonder we don't have the position filled when you're offering such a low amount of money, yet we have money to pay for a vacation to Florida 10 days before you're not going to be a mayor anymore. That, to me, is not a wise use of taxpayer funds, and my second question, that I hope will get answered at some point, would be, how much money is going to be spent? How much money did you approve for that? Because I don't think any taxpayers are in support of that, I don't agree with it at all, and I think you should rescind that approval, and at the very least, you should tell us how much of our taxpayer money is going to fund their vacation. Thank you very much.
Okay, so that's the end of public comment today, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Clerk?
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So move. Second.
Excuse me a minute. I don't, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry for the sidebar. All right, so colleagues, I am assuming that no one wants to pull any items out, and so with that, all in favor?
I'm sorry. Abstain.
I'm in favor.
Okay. Let's do the vote again. All in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
Abstain.
Okay, so, did you get that? We have five in favor, two abstentions. All right, now, let's move on. We're going all the way to introduction of ordinances, which is item 19.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of Livingston Road from Five Points to Ridgeway Street to Mr. Primmus Wheeler Drive.
So move.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, this is just an introduction.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, Dr. Shirley. When it first started, it was Dr. Shirley and Reuben Anderson, University of Mississippi Medical Center, and Tugalu College, to save the Jackson Medical Mall, which was created as a Jackson Medical Mall, just a Jackson Mall that was falling in, and Trustmark Bank had some people that was involved to make a dream a reality, but people died, Dr. Shirley died, and it was Primmus Wheeler who took this ball, tried to keep it afloat, because the Medical Mall is in the heart of the city, it's in the middle of Jackson, and some way, he's getting older and everything else. I know during the, during the crisis, he was out there in the cold winter, making sure they had water from tankers, and, you know, I ride my ward, and I'd be looking, I'd go ask, I said, Primmus, what you doing? We got to have water, they had tankers bringing water from Arkansas. So, we just want to tell him, thank you for caring, because a lot of people who possibly could have been dead alive today because of that Medical Mall and the services that it provided to sick people. So, we're trying to tell Primmus, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, and so this is an introduction of this ordinance that will be voted on by the council on July the 15th. Thank you, thank you. All right, the next item, item 20, also an introduction.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of Pocahontas Avenue from Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to Meggerts Evers Boulevard to Frank, Frank, Frank Figures Jr. and Laura Terrell Figures Drive.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, this is a street they live on, and continue to live on this same street. Frank Figures is on the school board, and I went to his home early one morning to beg him to serve. And some great people really don't want to get in government because of the negative things that take place. His wife was supportive of him, and they are team. When you have a husband, a wife team, you keep them together, you don't separate them. And, you know, and I told them, we understand their team, and that's what we doing today. We're honorary naming the street they live on and been on, it's still Pocahontas, but they'll also have that designation, and it support the idea of a marriage, and we must continue to let people know that's the right thing to do. Get married, stay together, stay married. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Okay, then we are moving now to item 21. Yesterday, colleagues, during those of you who were at work session, we were told this item may be pulled, but it is not. Clerk?
Ordinance amending section 118-595 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinance's Neighborhood Traffic Calming Procedure.
All right, Mr. Martin, would you like to give us an overview on this, or colleagues, if you'd like, we could, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Williamson, colleagues, just wait, wait just a minute, colleagues, if you, if you wish, we could wait until the next city council meeting and get the briefing then, when the new council is seated. I think that may be a better use of our time.
Let's do that thing.
Unless y'all want a overview tonight.
Let's wait.
Okay.
Even though some of them here, I think that's wise.
We're going to wait until the next city council meeting, work session, when you can do the overview then. All right, item, colleagues, item 22 has been pulled, along with, these items have been pulled, item 22, 41, 51, and 52. Did I get everything?
Can you do that, say that one more time?
Yes, sir. Items 22, 41, 51, and 52. All right. Okay, now we're moving into adoption of, of ordinances. Clerk, we have already done all but item 26.
Ordinance amending sections 2-36 and 2-191 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinance to increase the mayor and the members of the council salaries.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues, before we even get started on this item, I, I made the decision with support from the clerk of the council and the, and city legal, because even though we missed the deadline to do this for the next four years, we can go ahead and consider this item with the amendment of that it take effect in 2029, right? And so, colleagues, I would like to propose an amendment that every time it says that this would be taking effect in the year 2025, that it be changed to 2029.
Second. So move this second, yeah, so move.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second on that, any questions? It's in there, one, two, three, I see four times. Any other questions, any questions on this? All right, all in favor of the amendment as proposed. All right, carries with a vote of 7-0. Now, colleagues, the item is on the floor as amended. Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to, I'll move to amend this to wherever, everywhere it says $35,000 to push that up to $40,000 for the city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to change from $35,000 per council members to $40,000 per city council members. We have a motion and a second. Any comment on that? Mr. Foot?
I disagree with that. I think we, I don't think we should even have $35,000. So I'm against this just because I think it's bad optics for the city to be raising its pay, even if it's four years from now. Basically, doubling its pay. I think that's bad optics.
It's not quite doubling it.
Well, close.
It's really not doubling it. But I would like to remind everybody, and I don't have that note in front of me, but I think it's been since, like, 2001 or something like that, the early 2000s since the city council has had any kind of pay increase. And I am leaving the city council. This is my last meeting, and I thought I was the right person to finally say it's time for you all to get a vote. So, and I appreciate Mr. Foot's objection, but we generally, right now, we make right at $25,000 a year. All right. Any other comment? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, Madam President, I just want to add, you know, this is important because you have a lot of people that are under the age of 50, that are career young adults that would love to serve their city. And this council's position, you know, even though it's stated as a part-time job, is a full-time job. When you go to Kroger's, you better answer. When you go, wherever you go, you could be at the football game, they're going to ask you about something in your ward. And so, I think that this encourages people to take understanding civics, and it will also encourage people to... Because it's unfortunate that a lot of people in our city don't even study to learn about the form of government we have and aren't even educated about the type of government you have because it's not an interesting career because of what it pays. And I think that we're taking a step in the right direction to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. All right, so we have the amendment on the floor to take this from $35,000 to $40,000. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, just a comment really in support of that. City council, you know, we don't, we really don't make enough money. We don't balance things out at the end of the month at all. It's coming out of our pockets. And then we have to pay for our own vehicles and travel and maintenance and meetings and donations and so forth. So I really appreciate my colleagues. And looking at this, again, not for us today, but for folks down the road, to encourage them that this is a good career, this is a good profession to serve. And they need to be rewarded the same way, with the same value. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. All in favor of the amendment as proposed? Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so we have five in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. All right. So now the item is before us as amended twice. Any other questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so it's the same. Five, one.
One, one.
Thank you. And thank you, colleagues, for that. This is our gift to the new council, because now you don't have to do this.
You don't have to do it.
So, all right, now, we are moving on now to claims.
Order proving claims appearing at pages 503 to inclusive thereon a municipal docket of claims in the amount of $5,668,986.11 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Malinbecker, larger claims, please.
In this docket, there are as follows. First, Richard's Disposal Incorporated in the amount of $851,000 paid out of Fund Nine, landfill sanitation. This is for the April 2025 residential collection. Second is MV Contract Transportation, Inc. in the amount of $463,081.64 paid out of Fund 187 Transportation. This is for the April 2025 fixed route services. Third, MV Contract Transportation, Inc. in the amount of $456,787.97 paid out of Fund 187 Transportation. This is for the March 2025 fixed route services. And the fourth is Gibbs Travis, P L L C in the amount of $350,000 paid out of Fund 18, state toward claims. This is for a settlement claim.
Thank you, Mr. Malinbecker. Colleagues, any questions regarding claims? Mr. Banks?
Yeah. Mr. Malinbecker, any of the items in 29 are the things that are going to be the moves in 29? Is any of that in claims?
It should not be. I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
All right, colleagues, any other questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of claims? Opposed? Carries with a vote of 4-3. All right, item 28, payroll.
Order proving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number 320572, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on payroll? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Dr. the $15 an hour.
Yes.
And I thank you for your hard work. You know, it's been months, years, you've been trying to raise everything up. And I know some cities have made the $15 an hour a reality. How far we away from all employees at least making $15 an hour? And tell us about the success you have done in moving some up, please.
Yes, and Councilman Stokes, and I have to look at the numbers to see. I think we still have probably about 15% of our employees that are below. And they've increased, right? Some are about $13 and change. But in that number, we do have some of our summer youth that are below the $15 an hour. And also, the senior aid program that's funded through Department of Labor. We do have, I think, when you look at maybe some firefighter positions, the hourly rate might convert to less than that. But because of the way they work, right, based on the hours, their salaries are much more. And so we do hope, when we get in the next budget cycle, that we can elevate whoever was, whoever is still below the 15. And so that will be the conversation that we'll have with the city council. Sure.
And I apologize for the interruption, Mr. Stokes. Any other questions on payroll? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of 7-0. Thank you very much. We're going to put item 29 in the Finance Committee. We are putting item 30 in the Finance Committee. Item 31, clerk?
Order establishing the assessment for the downtown Jackson Business Improvement District for year 2025.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, this is, as you know, this is a tax that the Downtown Jackson Partners imposes upon itself. This is money that is not our money, but by state statute, it blows through the city. And it is upon us to vote to then just send the money on to the Downtown Jackson Partners. And there are members of the Downtown Jackson Partners here tonight. Could y'all just, Alice Quinn and I think Liz Brewster's here. Thank you. All right, so are there any questions about this item?
Madam President, excuse me. City clerk.
Is there a problem?
I'm sorry, Angela Harris, municipal clerk. I wanted to talk to you about agenda item number 30. I know, I just looked, I realized that's the item that we needed.
I'm sorry, but, okay, you're out of order. And we are on item 31. All right. Any questions or comments, colleagues, on item 31?
Ma'am?
Mr. Hartley?
Just one question. The tax itself, how is that collected? Through what mechanism, what program?
The tax is assessed from the property owners.
Property owners, okay.
Yes, sir. And it, yeah.
Okay.
So it's passed through. All right, any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, we have six in favor, one abstaining. All right, 32?
Order ratifying payment to Bearfield Workplace Solutions, Inc. for office supplies.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, six in favor, one abstaining. Item 33?
Order ratifying payment to CDW Government for the purchase of an Apple iMac.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so we had six in favor, one abstention. I mean, one opposed and one abstention. All right?
Five, one, one.
Five, one, one. What did I say? Item 34?
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the buyer LLC to provide the Jackson Fire Department with a compliance engine, a solution to manage fire protection systems.
So move.
This item fails for lack of a second. Item 35?
Order permitting the management of reservations at community centers with the Department of Human and Cultural Services and authorizing the mayor to sign a coordinator agreement with Seymour Bell to manage rental of space at Westside Community Center.
So move.
This item fails for lack of a second. Item 36?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Artisan Pyrotechnics to provide a pyrotechnic fireworks display on June 18, 2025, and accepting a monetary donation of $10,000 from Downtown Jackson Partners LLC.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I would like to thank Downtown Jackson Partners for this generous donation. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Banks, how'd you vote?
I voted in favor.
Oh, you did? Okay, I didn't see you. All right, so we have, where did you vote? Okay, so we have six in favor, one abstention. Okay. All right, 37?
Order authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Artisan Pyrotechnics, Inc. to produce a fireworks display for the city's Fourth of July celebration being held on Thursday, July 3, 2025, at Smithville Stadium, and approving payment for said fireworks display.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of 7-0. All right, item 38?
Yeah.
Order ratifying and improving the payment of $950.31 for invoice related to services for tractor T-211 and the sum of $237.81 for the invoice related to services for tractor T-0258 to Devaney Equipment.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Yes, sir, Mr. Hartley.
Just a quick question, maybe Mr. Malinbecker, Mr. Reich can answer this. That particular vendor, how are we doing? I know this is just a small amount, but overall, do you know how our relationship is? Have we been paying them, or are we up to speed? I know they're an important vendor that we use. Devaney Equipment.
Abraham Mohammed Parks and Rec. To the best of my knowledge, we're in good standards with them. I know as far as our business dealing with them, we are.
And actually, I was just asking the administration, are we doing okay with relationship-wise? Are they a happy vendor? Are we paying our bills? Okay, we're good. Good. Thank you. It's a good vendor. We want to keep our vendors out there happy. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
All right, any other questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Banks, I need you to raise your hand. All right, thank you. All right. Thank you. I'm sure. All right, so it carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 39?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a business class service order agreement to install Comcast high-speed internet with Wi-Fi at the Jackson Zoological Education Center in the gift shop.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries unanimously. Thank you, colleagues. Item 40?
Order accepting 12-month bid of Great Daniel Chevrolet for crew cab trucks submitted in response to IFB-07203-041525 to be used by Department of Parks and Recreation.
So move. Second.
All right, we have, I think, actually, Ms. Clay.
Okay.
I've done it, too. Yeah. All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Mr. Banks?
Yes. Mr. Malinbecker, do you remember how much we appropriated in the master lease program?
So I believe it was not to exceed $3 million.
Not to exceed $3 million? All right, so here's my question. Is this a master lease or a purchase?
Yeah, so, and we've had conversations with Dr. Mohammed. This is going to be part of the master lease. By the way, it typically works, the department would make the offer to purchase so they can get a title, right? And then we'll use the title to submit as part of the master lease loan, right? So we essentially pledge general funds where we get reimbursed once we close on the loan in September. Right? So, by the way you look at it, it is a purchase to get the title so it can be included as part of the master lease. And then once you get the loan, you reimburse a general fund and then begin to make payments on the...
So if I'm following you right, with the not to exceed $3 million that we appropriated during the budget for the master lease program, would this be coming out of that?
Yes.
So why was there a need for a transfer in the previous, with the item 29 that's been put in committee?
Yes. So I understand, and the budget manager should be here. Did you say Brandon? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, when I, so in fact, the note that was circulated, um, from a budgeting standpoint, I think he had not included it in, in there. And so, in the amendment, that was to, uh, but, but the, the monies that we set aside,
and I can't remember, colleagues, if we did set aside certain amounts for each department in that master lease. I thought we might have. I, I thought we might have, like Parks and Rec had a certain amount, Public Works had a certain amount that we set aside, but, but overall, it was not to exceed three million.
Correct.
And so, you know, I don't, I don't want there to be, you know, confusion, wanting the order, you know? I'm just used to looking at, you know, an order where the master lease is done a certain way, but I guess what you're doing is, you're purchasing the title. Once we get the loan, you're going to reimburse it.
Correct.
Would, would that mean that another order would have to come back before this body?
Uh, yes, so
While we're doing all that extra work.
To close, uh, to close out the loan, right? So they, uh, July should be the last month that departments can actually, June, July first, right? So that we can close in September because it has to fall under this fiscal year. Uh, and so that, that order will come before the city council to close that law.
Say it one more time.
Yeah. So July, July first
Uh-huh.
is the last time that departments can proceed.
Where is that?
Right, where is that?
Yeah. Is that, is that ordinance written that's law or is that something that you're just doing?
No, so in order to close it by, by September, right, you, you need enough time. Right, and, and I can let, um, Brandon speak to
Please.
some of the precise details.
Um, Brandon Jackson, Finance Manager. Um, with Tre- um, so the master lease is closed out by Treasury. Um, we're using the July the first deadline in order to, um, for all master lease purchases.
Say that one more time, just want to make sure we're clear. It's closed out by who?
Um, fa- well, Finance actually cre- uh, goes out there to, uh, get the loan for the master lease.
Who, who closes it out? It's not a policy anything that, that directs that? It's not, it's just something that's decided to do?
However, um, the reason why we're using the July the first, um, deadline is to make sure that we secure the loan by September. That's how, um, we actually do the master lease.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Mister Banks, were you finished?
For now.
Okay, Mister, Mister Griselle?
I, I don't have a mic, but.
Here, I'm sorry.
I, I'm gonna be honest, Mister Melonbecker, I, I have a lot of unreadiness. Thank you, I appreciate that. I have a lot of unreadiness. Is this something that this council has to take up today? Is the deadline that Mister Brandon gave you an arbitrary deadline?
No, so I think, and I'm not sure about the order specifically, maybe Doctor Mohammed can speak to it or legal. I, I don't know what they have in the actual.
I, I, I don't know if this is, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, again, you have done, you have not done anything to get rid of my, or to mitigate my unreadiness on this item. I have not been convinced, and this is a large sum of money. So is this something that we have to take up today?
And, and that's what I'm saying, I yield, because it's a, it's a separate order here from Parks and Recreation, I'm not sure what's in the timeline.
You my guy. Is this something that we have to take up today?
Well, and that's what I'm saying.
Mister Melonbecker, is this something that we have to take up today?
I, I cannot speak to the detail.
Councilman Stokes already answered my question. Is this something we have to take up today?
All right, let me yield to Mister.
I want to hear from you, Mister Melonbecker, then I'll ask Doctor Mohammed. Is this something that we have to take up today?
Let me ask him what's, what's in the order, right?
Wait, 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 can I follow?
Just wait, wait a minute, Mister Banks, let's let him answer.
If I could, yeah, no, I'm, I'm No, I, I don't. I'm, I'm, I guess my question is, there seems to be, um, some synergy around a concern here, and I'm trying to see what do we believe to be maybe the thing, you know, at question here. I'm, I'm assuming that this is something that the department needs, and is there some concern about, uh, some financial maneuvering that, that is nefarious of some type? I, I, I would assume that this, this appears from explanation to be an accounting move, and they need to do it so that they can make the transfer, and, and the reason that they want to close out a certain time is just to make certain that they keep their, you know, their accounting procedures in, in order. I'm not, I'm, I don't, I'm learning about this at this moment in time, but there seems to have been a lot of concern here, and, and I understand, uh, Fidelis's pause because the question of, does it have to be done, is, is a matter of the needs of the department, not so much financial, so that, that time is, is really, uh, consistent with the needs of the department, I would assume.
Okay, um, thank you, Mister Mayor. We're still waiting for some clarity, Mister Melonbecker.
Yes, and, and the reason I'm yielding to Parks and Recreation because they issued the invitation for bid, right? And I don't know what's, what was contained in that language, uh, and so that's why I would like to yield to Brother Mohammed to provide an explanation, um, of why, you know, the, the need might be of essence.
No, no disrespect, Brother Mohammed, no disrespect at all.
Because this, this
This is not his matter. My question still stands, because our next meeting is July eighth, and we could easily put this in committee and try to figure it out.
Right.
But is this something that we have to do today?
So to, to answer your question, right?
We got two new council members coming, and I really think they should have some kind of voice here, too.
Right, so in my response to the need, the item that was put in Finance Committee, right, we, we can do that, I think, uh, we will have time. But the reason I was yielding is because, uh, I know bids, I think, have been opened, and, and I'm not sure what the, put in the parameters.
You said we'll have time.
For the amendment, the budget amendment, right? And that item is in committee, has been put in committee.
I'll yield, Madam President.
Mister Banks?
So, this is why I'm trying to get to the clarity. Since twenty-nine has been put in committee, and there was money moved supposedly interdepartmental to put this money there, and then you have this order here
Right.
that deals with this. Two, two separate questions. One, why was there the need for the move of the money when we put up to or not to exceed three million in the master lease program anyway? And is this maneuver even necessary?
Yeah.
That, that is, that is the concern. And so since twenty-nine is in committee, which does the transferring financially, and then you have this other order, I mean, it, it really can't be done anyway.
Yeah.
All right, colleagues, I think there is just entirely too much confusion around this. I'm also sensing extreme unreadiness among, among those of you here, all of you here. Um, I am, I would like to put this in the Finance Committee unless there is an objection. All right?
I don't have a dog in the fight.
Well, you don't, Mister Mayor.
I have a dog in the fight.
Mister, Doctor Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, I, I, I not only have a dog in the fight, I have the whole pack in the fight. These are vehicles that I came before budget and asking for that we've been trying to obtain for some time. And the administration can tell you as well as some council members know, I've gone as far as to go to the city garage to find vehicles that have been taken out of service to try to get them fixed so that we can do the job that I've been tasked to do. So I've been asked to go and put this out the bid, I've done that twice, the bid has been opened, uh, the vendors were here. These are vehicles that I need desperately to work. I have superintendents that cannot check behind the crews to make sure that we're doing the job that we're tasked to do because the crews are riding in the superintendent's truck. The deputy and myself, we're giving of our trucks so that they can go and do the job that needs to be done. I, I'm not, I'm not privy to the finance and how all of that is done. I'm just coming to you to tell you that you're asking me to make brick with no straw. I'm fighting a war with no bullets or no soldiers. I need to have these trucks to do what is necessary so I can keep the three-one-ones down, keep the city looking good, and do the job that I'm asked to do. So I'm asking council to work with me on that, how we can make this happen. Thank you.
Um, Doctor Mohammed, yes, Mister Banks?
Go ahead, yeah. So, is this normally how you do a lease per, I mean, do, do your master lease? This is the, to answer your question, Councilman Banks, this is the first time at my time at the helm in doing the master lease, the whole process. I'm doing it as the step, as I'm being guided how to do it. Did somebody specifically tell you to do it as a purchase? To, to put it out the bid? Yeah. Yes, sir. Okay, all right. And so apparently, what you have in twenty-nine is in committee, I, I would, according to what he's saying, the way he's trying to do this, what you have in twenty-nine is incorrect. Because you got it, you, you have a move from the master lease budget. Are you moving more money to the master lease budget? Why are you moving more money to the master lease budget when there's already three million there to take care of this?
So, um, there's a master lease budget per, um, fund. Fund five is its own, um, separate, um, fund. Um, not, and this, it is not in general fund.
So the, what we appropriated during budget, where is that?
That was actually, um, placed in general fund.
Why can't he use what's in general fund?
Because he's Fund Five. Um, if we're going to purchase vehicles for Parks and Rec, it should be placed in, um, where they do their operations.
So when we said that we wanted to do specific vehicles for Parks and Rec, why didn't you all put it in Fund Five at that time?
Um, I'm guessing that was a miscommunication, but because that wasn't reiterated to me.
All right.
All right, look, uh, uh, Councilwoman Clay.
I think there's a problem with what you're saying with the budget, and we need to go back and look at where the funds are overall and use the funds appropriately. If they've been allocated during the budget time, then they should be used for that, whether they were put in the wrong line or not. We got some minutes, and we should be able to figure out what we got.
Most definitely.
All right, thank you. All right, colleagues, anybody ready to go vote on this, or do you want, do you agree that it should go into the Finance Committee? All right, this item is going into Finance Committee? And, I need you to, I'm sorry?
No order, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
We gotta withdraw, we gotta withdraw, I'm, I'm getting there. All right, so we've got to withdraw, um, the motion and the second. Who made that motion?
I will throw my motion.
All right, okay, thank you very much. All right, we're moving on now to item forty-two.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the optional two-year renewal agreement and related documents with Toshiba Business Solutions to provide equipment, support, maintenance, and copies for the transportation system.
So move, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Um, colleagues, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
I'm not in favor, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's a vote of seven-zero. All right, item forty-three.
Order ratifying the agreement with Fountain Construction Company, Inc. for the Thawma Mall Hall Emergency Chiller Replacement.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with a vote of seven-zero, thank you, Mister Banks. Item forty-four.
Order accepting the proposal of Johnson Controls, Inc. for repairs to the Arts Center of Mississippi Building and Environment Controls.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. This is, I believe, this is for the, is this the, this is the planetarium item, Mister Williamson, yes. All right, any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with a vote of seven-zero. Item forty-five.
Order amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget of the City of Jackson Department of Public Works Infrastructure Division to provide additional funds for purchasing asphalt for street repairs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mister Hartley.
Yeah, I'm, and again, I apologize, some of us was, were out of the planning meeting yesterday, but this, we just approved one last week, or week before last, didn't we? So where's this pot of money coming from?
Okay. Terry Williamson, Office of the City Attorney. Um, you know, based on the discussion, uh, this is the rest of the money that was allocated for each ward to do street work. And it was originally in professional services. Uh, it seemed at that time that the, uh, council would prefer that that be in, you know, materials that, you know, city crews could go out and make repairs. So this is just moving the rest of that money over there so you can, so crews can purchase asphalt and, you know, pave pothole, potholes and
And, and we discussed that during the last meeting, did, did we not?
Yes.
Yeah, and so, uh, it, are there any other issues with asphalt or anything we need to work with? I know, uh, asphalt and potholes and, and all those zones, that's real critical right now. Do you need anything else?
Louis Rice, CEO, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with a vote of seven-zero, thank you. Forty-six.
Order ratifying procurement of sidewalk repairs in the funding by Bulldog Construction Company.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Uh, colleagues, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with the vote of seven-zero. All right, item forty-seven.
Order rescinding the May twenty-twenty-five order authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number Two to the Agreement for Construction Engineering and Inspection for Street Resurfacing Project Phase One A with Neil Schaefer, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to execute a revised Amendment Number Two to the Agreement for Construction Engineering and Inspection for Street Resurfacing Project Phase One A with Neil Schaefer, Inc.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second on this, any questions, colleagues?
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mister Hartley.
And I apologize, is there anyone that could just give me some of the basics of this? Yeah, can you just give me some of the basics of this? Okay, we, we're hiring a contractor to do repaving?
Oh, no, uh, if you'll remember, um, I think it was two meetings ago, um, this is, uh, Street Resurfacing Project, uh, Phase One A. Um, and this, Neil Schaefer is the engineer on this, and, and this is to amend their contract. The reason we're having to rescind the previous order was that, um, you know, after we did that order, uh, the contractor submitted a change order, um, our, uh, you know, consulting engineer reviewed that request for a change order, which also included a request for time. So, you know, initially, you know, the extra engineering costs were going to be paid from, uh, you know, liquidated damages for being late, but now since we've given them extra time, you know, we have to go back and
Change up the paperwork.
Yeah, so that, yeah.
It, is this related to the item we passed with Neil Schaefer last meeting?
I think it was two meetings.
If I could speak, I think I can give some clarity to it.
Mister, Mister.
All of this comes, uh, pursuant to, uh, the one percent sales tax projects. Uh, at a point in time, uh, after taking the list from neighborhood associations, which helped create, uh, you know, List One A and One B, uh, we realized that there were some streets that were in disrepair, uh, but were adjacent, very small streets that were adjacent to much of the projects we were doing. Um, and as a committee, we felt that it would be, um, negligent of, of, of the city to pave all of these streets and then just leave a little cul-de-sac that could have been taken care of at one point in time, but may not arrive on the list because maybe you have one or two people who live on that street, but it really wouldn't be a big heavy for the city to take care of those areas. So once, uh, those ancillary streets were noticed, uh, we decided that we wanted to go after those streets, and so that created a change in, in, uh, the scope of what Neil Schaefer was putting together. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mister Mayor. All right, any other questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with a vote of seven-zero. Um, item forty-eight.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number One to the Agreement for Engineering Services with Crown Engineering P L L C for West Capital Street Improvement Phase Two, Prentice Street to Gallatin Street.
So, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with a vote of seven-zero. Item forty-nine.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute change order number three to the contract of Dickerson and Bowen, Inc. for construction of Street Resurfacing Project Phase One A.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's a vote of seven-zero. Item fifty.
Order accepting the bid of A J Construction, Inc. for the Beasley Road Northwest Industrial Parkway Northwest Progress Parkway Resurfacing Project.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any questions?
I'll just say, this is
Yes, sir, Mister Mayor.
this project is very important to our business community. The need for this came out of our Planning and Development Department. Mister Keaton, uh, really expressed that in his discussions with our business community, uh, that they were crying out for this, so I think this is an important thing for you to support.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero, thank you. Item fifty-three.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a preliminary engineering services contract with Pickering Firm, Inc. for the McClure Road Across Caney Reef Relief Bridge Replacement S T P dash seven-two-eight-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-L P A one-zero-nine-six-eight-zero-dash-seven-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-Hines County.
So move, second.
Motion, second, colleagues, any, any questions or comments?[1757.63] Mr. Banks.
Yeah, this, so there's gonna be a bridge replacement right there on McClure. Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Wright. And I, I wouldn't, no, I'm due this, but I gotta do this. Swan Lake has been without a bridge for going on four years.
Yeah.
Swan, it's been four years. In the middle of that community, those people have to take that detour all the time. There's a lot of traffic that goes up and down McClure Road. How long is this gonna be? You know, from what I've seen of the cities, they get their stuff together, their specs together, and get their bridge ordered and everything done before they just tear the bridge down and just sit up there for five or six years. And, and this not, might not be just this in-house City of Jackson. But my question is, when I go through other cities and they tear down a bridge in three weeks, four weeks, it's back up. But in the City of Jackson, it's four or five years. And I, and I know that these are done either federally mandated or through, through the state when it comes to redoing these bridges. But, you know, it's just, it's just unacceptable how long, you know, it takes. And I'm sorry to be on the soapbox, but we almost lost AutoZone right there. You know, we, we almost lost several businesses because that bridge was out, you know, on McDowell Road, you know, for over two years. Is there a legal fix or can somebody talk to somebody? I understand it gotta be done, but, you know, Ms. Thomas told me this is gonna be unacceptable already.
Mr. Williamson.
Let me respond, let me check with Mr. Al Turk, because Swan Lake Bridge, that has been bid. And I, and so I'm not sure why they haven't started construction on that yet. It may have to do, we, we've run into some issues with some of these bridges with Entergy relocating power lines.
I remember AT&amp;T on McDowell.
Yeah, we've run in, we've run into some problems, and that may be what's holding up construction. But I, I'm, my recollection is that, that, you know, we, we bid that out and awarded to Hemphill Construction to, to proceed with. So I will check with, or Mr. Wright or I will check with Mr. Al Turk and, and get him to figure out what the status of that is and give you a report.
And colleagues, just gonna, you know, be here, please make sure that Shaw Road and this bridge don't take three or four years. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries with the vote of seven-zero. Fifty-four.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a construction engineering inspection services agreed with Mari Engineering Services, L L C, for resurfacing McDowell Road Extension from Highway Eighteen to Raymond Road, S T P dash eight-two-eight-eight-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-four, L P A, one-zero-nine-two-eight-five-seven-zero-one-zero-zero-zero, Heinz County.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a hearty second. All right, any questions or comments? Mr. Hartley.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam President. On this stretch of road, do we know a timeframe we're looking at for starting when folks can expect maybe some disruption in traffic? And how long this project's gonna take?
With this one, I, I believe the bid award is also on here. So I think this is, it's an L P A project, so it will have to go to, you know, the Department of Transportation for them to concur in the award. So it depends on when their next meeting is, but, you know, as soon, as soon as we can issue a notice, we'll do that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, colleagues. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven-zero. Fifty-six.
Fifty-five.
Oh, fifty-five, sorry.
Order accepting the bid of APAC Mississippi, Inc. for the resurfacing McDowell Road Extension between Highway Eighteen and Raymond Road, S T P dash eight-two-eight-eight-dash-zero-zero-zero-four, L P A, Heinz County, subject to concurrence by the Mississippi Transportation Commission.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, carries seven-zero. Fifty-six.
Order accepting the bid of Hemphill Construction Company, Inc. for the Small Wood Street Bridge Replacement Project.
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, we have a vote of six with one abstention. Item fifty-seven.
Order accepting bid of AmeriMac Chemical Company for the twenty-four-month supply of washed gravel and the bid of Bolton Sand and Gravel Pit, L L C, for the twenty-four-month supply of clay gravel, bid number seven-zero, seven-five-zero-seven-seven-dash-zero-five-two-zero-two-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just my elementary question. Are they bringing it as we need it? Do we pick it up as we need it? Do they bring it here and store it? How does that work with the gravel?
Louis Rice, CAO, I don't know exactly how we, they probably are storing it at their location, and we just go and get what we need at that time, but I'll find out and let you know.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? I believe that was a vote of seven-zero. Okay, vote of seven-zero. Thank you. Item fifty-eight.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims in the matter of Jennifer Wayland Smith versus City of Jackson, Mississippi, et al., in the County Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District Civil Action Number Nineteen dash four-zero-four-nine.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this item that we can talk about in open session? Hearing none, all in favor? How'd you vote, Mr. Banks?
In favor.
Okay, so it's a vote of six in favor with one abstention. All right, item fifty-nine.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Jackson, the Mississippi Transportation Commission, through the Mississippi Department of Transportation, Heinz County, and the Mississippi Department of Corrections in the support of inmate litter program.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions? Mr. Hartley.
I'm sorry, is there someone that can address this issue?
Can, I can speak to it.
Okay, just a, just a basic of how that relationship is going along? Are we gonna be able to use them when, where?
This has been a long time in the making. This is an agreement that takes several different entities in order to bring this into fruition. It's not only Heinz County, but MDOT, I mean, not only Heinz County Sheriff's Department, but MDOT and then the Department of Corrections as well. And, you know, throughout this process, it's always been kind of one party that has, you know, needed some change or correction or delay. But this will allow for inmate pickup along state highways, state intersections. It won't allow them to go on, you know, street, streets that the City of Jackson maintains. But any level of relief to the overall objective of picking up litter in the City of Jackson is much needed. And, you know, we have been trying to work to make this happen for some time. So I'm happy to see this going. This has been more than two years, more than two years, trying to bring this into fruition. So happy to see this happening.
Okay, and just a follow-up. Who, who has jurisdiction over these, of the inmates? Who has jurisdiction?
The jurisdiction of the inmates is the Department of Corrections, because they're in their custody. But while they are working on streets within the City of Jackson, the Heinz County Sheriff's Department will be doing supervision in order to ensure their safety and, and making sure that, that everything is contained as it should be. These inmates are not coming from Heinz County. That is why the inmate litter program stopped some time ago because Heinz County Detention Center lost the capacity to, to hold M D O C trustees. And so these inmates will be coming from other facilities within the Department of Corrections.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foot.
Thank you. The, appreciate all the work that went into getting this to the finish line. I guess this is the finish line. The, and I think the citizens will be encouraged to see more people out there picking up litter. That'll be good for their morale. My question is, who sets the, the schedule and decides which roads or which highways are gonna be picked up? Does that happen at the Department of Corrections or the county? Does anybody know who oversees that?
Drew Martin, City Attorney. Yes, sir, that's set out in the M O U, and I'm trying to find it real quick. I believe that, yeah, M T C will furnish the routes and instructions as to which state highways will be cleaned and when. Transportation Commission.
The Transportation Commission?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons will be involved.
Right, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Just...
Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, one final court, follow-up for the administration. Do, oh, we have a person who coordinate cleanups and cutting right-of, right-of ways and so forth, and solid waste, are they gonna be able to coordinate with these folks as, as well?
I believe that there will be correspondence and communication, but matching the schedule of when M D O C can get out there. And as he said, the, the actual issuing of the routes will be through the Department of Transportation, because it's their, it's, in some ways, their, their responsibility to begin with.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, colleagues? I want to thank the, the mayor and Mr. Martin for their work on this effort. It's really much appreciated.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but, you know, thank you. But legal has been wrestling with this bear for some time, so the, the majority of credit goes there and solid waste and everybody else.
Thank you very much. All right, all in favor? All right, it carries with a vote of seven-zero. Item sixty.
Resolution directing the issuance and authorizing the issuance of tax increment financing bonds to District of Eastover Project Series Twenty-Twenty-Five of the City of Jackson, Mississippi in the principal amount of not to exceed $2,553,000 of an authorized aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $7 million to raise for the purpose of paying the cost of the infrastructure improvement as hearing after defined in the cost of issuance, authorizing, and approving the forms of and the execution and delivery of a private placement agreement or bond purchase agreement and certain other documents in connection with the Series Twenty-Twenty-Five bonds authorizing proper officers to do all the other things deemed necessary or advisable in connection with such bonds and for related purposes.
Second.
Second, okay. Did you get that? I'm sorry. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor?
Epstein.
Okay, we had five in favor with two abstentions. Item sixty-one.
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, State of Emergency.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven-zero. Item sixty-two.
Order reviewing and continuing State of Emergency.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with the vote of seven-zero. Sixty-three.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, supporting start training.
So moved, second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President. I know we're trying to get through the meeting, and it's self-explanatory, July twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh, gonna be at the Department, the Training Fire Department Training Center.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with a vote of seven-zero. Let's see, the next item we're gonna need to do in executive session, colleagues. I believe sixty-seven, sixty-five. Is that right?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, sorry.
Order establishing the assessment for the Greater Bellhaven Improvement Assessment District.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this. Colleagues, this is very similar to the downtown Jackson bid. The property owners add an additional tax to their property, and this is not our money. It flows through the city. But this is an assessment that it goes to making improvements within the community, such as additional security and improved infrastructure and beautification and parks. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, so it's a vote of six in favor, one abstention. All right, sixty-seven.
Resolution of the mayor and the City Council of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, authorizing the pledge of the incremental increases in sale tax revenues received by the City of Jackson, Mississippi in connection with the city at Eastover Tiff Project to the payment of debt service on the $4,447,000 original principal amount, City of Jackson, Mississippi, tax increment financing revenue bonds, Series Twenty-Eighteen, and providing for related matters.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Epstein.
Epstein.
Wait a minute, what happened?
It was four and three abstentions.
Four, I thought we had four votes. I thought you were worried. But we had, we had four votes with three abstentions. Okay, thank you. All right. We are moving now to item sixty-eight.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson and Four Seasons Enterprises, L L C, to perform a full cleanup of a demolished structure, remove foundation, steps, driveway, cut grass and weeds, remove trash and debris, and to perform other work to remedy the conditions on private property that constitutes a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare according to the Mississippi Code, annotated section twenty-one-dash-nineteen-dash-eleven, for case C E twenty-one-dash-nineteen-eighty-six, located at Zero Ellis Avenue, also known as Zero Bobby Rush Boulevard, formerly fifteen-twenty-five Ellis Avenue, parcel number two-two-zero-dash-eight-dash-four, for the contract amount of $450,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, this the old hotel.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, just, just one question, and this probably have to do with future business, but it, I know this price is pretty hefty. And a lot because it's involved with asbestos.
That's the reason.
And it has to go to hazardous waste site.
Yes.
And so forth. Is there any, down the road, I'm hoping that we'll entertain a conversation about hiring an asbestos person that can delineate between the zones or the areas and the, and the buildings that need to be going to a hazardous waste site and those that are not, because there's a big price difference there.
It is. Drew Martin, City Attorney, I, I can address that this way. For this property, it wouldn't have mattered because of the way it was torn down.
Yeah.
We actually went to M D Q and talked to them about that anyway and tried to find another way to do it. We do have inspectors in the city who do make that evaluation when they go to look at a building that's gonna be demolished. We do also need to update the, some of the training on that, though, for the reasons you say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right, colleagues, any other questions on this item? Mr. Hart, Mr. Foot.
So this is the hotel that the demolition was begun, and we had to stop because of the E Q. And now this is a redo of that, or beginning again?
We were never doing the demolition to begin with. This was done by the owner, and they didn't properly remediate the issue of asbestos. And they demolished, and the rubble has been sitting there for some time. And so the city is now stepping in to remove the eyesore that the rubble has now caused. But this was on the owner, and we're stepping in, you know, for public benefit.
I, I do have, I, I can give you one more piece of information in executive session about that, that, in terms of recouping the cost.
Well, we've got you down, Mr. Martin. I'm looking forward to hearing what all you have to say when we get to the executive session. Mr. Foot.
All right, so the low bid was $435,000. Is this come out of our, our demolition fund?
No, this one's actually C D B G funds, which is one of the reasons we need to go ahead and get it done. We have some deadlines coming up on that amount, but this is, this is C D B G funding.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good questions. Any other questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with a vote of seven-zero. All right, colleagues, we're now maybe, we have finished with the business part of our agenda. Did I, I got everything, Ms. Jordan, and we're all good? All right, we're moving on now to the discussion section. We have discussion Lake Highco. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President. On Sunday afternoons, we still have a number of citizens that ride, not just young people. And I followed them and rode with myself, and they go into Lake Highco. What's dangerous about this is that normally somebody's blocking the way to get out. So people had to try to turn around in the grassy area to go out the way other people are coming in. Young people looking for something positive to do. We need to create an avenue where we can have supervised police presence to make sure that when people ride, and most of them are not bad, young people, even older people on motorcycles. But we want to make sure we take the danger of, of situation arising. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, and thank you for putting that on the agenda. All right, Mr. Stokes, next is Coleman Avenue Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you, Mr. Wright. I know you handle the public works. Uh, some years ago, the bridge had almost collapsed, and we tried to get them to replace it. It wasn't replaced. Now, part of the bridge is one of those wooden bridges that's falling into the creek, and we're trying to make sure we can get this bridge replaced, whatever it takes to get it, get it started. We need to try to make sure before someone is hurt, uh, school buses go across this bridge, garbage truck go across this bridge, and it can become a danger. You have Heinz Junior College, Jackson Branch that's located around the corner, Coleman Turned to Sunset, which leading to it coming through the neighborhood, and we want to see if we get this bridge repaired. We're still trying to find out the timeframe for, uh, Reverend Dr. Williams Bridge on Marla the King.
Mr. Wright?
And we will open those beds, uh, the end of July, and at that point, we'll select a construction company and award a contract to someone to get that bridge taken care of.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, next we have, um, business renewal. Mr. Hartley.
Thank you, Madam President, and I, both of these items actually should have been business renewal and waste tires. Uh, wanted to find out maybe from someone in planning, we have a problem with waste tires and a lot of our mom and pop waste tire haulers out there that's illegally dumping tires around the city. Uh, and my question to perhaps someone in planning or finances, can we put something in the process of, of businesses that are granted business renewal licenses? Uh, if they have a tire shop that requires us to, that, that they prove that they are disposing of their waste tires legally. In other words, all they need to do is perhaps, uh, have, uh, some files show that, you know, they, are you, are you reading me at all? I'm looking. Am I making sense?
Well, you, you, you posed the question to legal and planning, but it's probably more appropriate for, I mean, for planning and finance, but it's probably more appropriate for legal, right?
Well, yeah.
To create an ordinance?
Yeah, well, actually, it's not necessarily orders unless it's necessary, but just some type of checklist where folks coming there and they said, hey, I got a tire shop and I'm renewing it for another year, and here's my paperwork where I've been disposing of, of the tires legally. And just, just something perhaps in our, uh, something to be added to our personnel, or excuse me, to our, uh, business renewal license.
Yeah, I think you, I think it is probably a question for planning because that may already be done. I don't know, but it would be part of the permitting, uh, process or renewals of that. And, you know, could something be added during that process? I think the answer is yes.
Okay. Very well then. Then I'll bring it up to planning then.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley, and that was both seventy-two and seventy-three combined.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, and that was a good, good question. All right, um, seventy-four is discussion. Well, no, mine is, uh, street repaving program update. Mr. Wright, um, we don't have to go into all of that tonight, but could you just get us a memo on where everything is before the, the end of this term, so we just kind of know where everything stands? We would be very grateful. Thank you. Um, next is review and continuation of COVID-19 local emergency. Uh, there's still COVID. Mr. Mayor?
All right, to kind of go back to the prior item, but I think for the benefit of council members, because I'm sure you want to communicate on your way out, uh, if we could also have a memo with regard to the drainage projects, uh, from I M S that you can talk about.
Great idea.
What's supposed to be in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so both, miss, thank you, Mr. Wright and Mr. Mayor. All right, um, so any discussion about COVID? We're good.
It's bad.
All right, now, we are gonna, we're gonna have to go into executive session for litigation? Well, we have to go into executive session.
Since you're going, I'm going to tell you one thing when we're there, but I don't, I don't need it for, for litigation today.
Tell, you don't need, you don't need.
I have one thing I'm going to tell you if you're already in executive session.
Oh, but can you, I mean, can you go right now and tell us, was there anything you needed to tell us in open session?
No.
Can it be a confidential memo?
I mean, it's a one, it's a one sentence. It'd be shorter than this was. You're going into executive session anyway.
Right, right, Mr. Banks. Let's just, we gotta go. All right, look, let's go on to colleagues. We're moving on to, we're going to wrap this up, and then we'll go into executive session, so everybody else gets to go home. All right, so colleagues, any closing, oh, wait, seventy-six, monthly financial reports. I got mine. Show of hands. Did everybody get there? See it? Okay. Six of us did. All right, now, announcements. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I have, I have a few here. Uh, first, the City of Jackson's three-one-one app is now, uh, active. Residents are encouraged to download Jackson three-one-one on either Google Play Store or the Apple Store. Uh, this app offers a quick and easy solution for residents to report, uh, related issues of potholes, overgrown, yada, yada, et cetera. The parking meters, uh, as of July one, uh, you will not be limited to two hours to park. That will be eliminated. Uh, you can also purchase a monthly pass, uh, which will be available on Ju- uh, July one. Uh, spaces will not be reserved, but you, once you pack, get the parking, uh, monthly pass, then you can park in any metered space. Uh, and for more information, you can call S P at six oh one nine six six forty-one oh eight or visit ParkJackson.com. Uh, the Juneteenth fireworks extravaganza is set for Wednesday, June eighteenth at seven P M. at the Jackson Convention Center. Uh, the fireworks show will begin at nightfall. Uh, obviously, family-friendly is free and open to the public. Lawn chairs are welcome, uh, but glass containers, grills, and tents are prohibited. Uh, ice cream safari is July twelfth from ten A M. to one P M. at the Jackson Zoo. Uh, we thank Blue Bell and, uh, Visit Jackson for its sponsorship. It is free for kids two and under, ten dollars for children three to twelve, and thirteen dollars for everyone over thirteen years of age. Zippity Zoo Day is June twenty-eighth from eleven A M. to two P M. Uh, it's an animal enrichment day. Uh, join the zookeepers for activities and special chats at the exhibits, arts and crafts, food trucks, and a bouncy house will be, uh, on location. Uh, it is eight dollars for those thirteen and up, and five dollars for ages two to twelve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brazil and then Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. So, and I'm going to try to not be too long here, but I do need to get personal. I know this is y'all's last ride. Aaron and Virgie, I thank you for your wise counsel. I thank you for taking me under your wing as a freshman councilman, teaching me what I need to know, use some motherly words when she needed to use some motherly words. And I just, I just want to say thank you, you know, and, and I will forever be grateful for everything that you've done for me during this time. Aaron Breon Banks.
Thank you, uh, Madam President.
Yes, sir. I got two of them, Mr. Stokes. Aaron Breon, Breon Banks, you will forever go down in history as the man, I call him the kid, that knows the budget unlike anybody else. You have carried out year after year, these budget hearings. You know the budget unlike anybody else, and that's what most of them are going to miss about you because I don't know who I'm going to talk to about where the, the money is moving and all this kind of stuff, but I thank you. I thank you for everything, even the trying times, the challenging times. But I just want to let everybody know that it's because of him. We learn a lot about this budget, and I'm stronger because of you, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Stokes?
Uh, Madam President, could we close the meeting in honor of Mrs. Marge Cameron Thorne, Mr. Leo Mason, Deacon Ellis Montgomery Hubbard, Mr. James Hawkins, Mr. Lucius Levy, and Mr. Jimmy D. Johnson III. Madam President, I just, it's not a lot you can say. I, I couldn't make to a lot of activities today. I didn't want to start crying thinking about people leaving. I don't care how you fuss and fight, you still one family, and it make a big difference. And, you know, I, I appreciate your leadership as president. Sometimes this thing could get real, real heated and ugly, and you'll keep everybody calm. When you think about Councilman Banks, he and, um, became the president of one of the national organizations where people really might not respect Mississippi. You know, that's something that when you deal with national groups and dealing with people all over the country, you really realize how some people never come to Mississippi, never been to Mississippi, but they have perceptions like, like this is eighteen oh four or something, and you got to work through all the debt nonsense, and Councilman Banks became president of a national organization dealing with, uh, leadership, uh, that people see all over this country. They learned how to respect, uh, leadership from Mississippi and Jackson. You know, he and Stamps worked hand in hand many, 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 many years to accomplish a lot, and it's going to be missed. It's going to be missed. It's going to be missed. Um, I think the mayor, you know, say what you want to, you know, the city moved forward in some ways, and it wasn't easy. Now, we got some ideas now. When they talk about water, they realize water just wasn't as easy as they thought it was going to be, and that, you know, possibly was moving better in the city's hands because you talk about, we were slowly getting people to pay the bills, and now they not paying them at all. They thought we need more money. We could have been hauling that all along. Yeah, we need more money. You know, but, you know, it, it's a lot going on that people don't see, but again, you one family, and sometimes husbands and wives fight, but they don't divorce. So again, we're going to miss the ones that's leaving, but like what happened today, uh, they got direction or roadmap on road, on street projects, drainage projects. Uh, you can believe Councilmember Lindsay and Councilmember Banks and others are going to keep up with when are these projects going to be completed, what's the status of them, and they not going to let that money walk away. So again, thank y'all for your hard work and your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Foot and then Mr. Hartley. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to, um, I want for us to close the meeting in honor of Miss Bessie Speed, who's a widow of Mr. Leland Speed and daughter-in-law of Mayor Leland Speed many, many years ago, and real, uh, great lady that, uh, longtime resident of Jackson. She passed away this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Um, Mr. Hartley and then Mr. Brazil.
Uh, yes, well, I, I guess I wanted to chime in on the group hug as well. Uh, look, we, we're taking a, a gap in leadership here, and we know it. We realize it. Uh, folks that have been around for a while on the council, folks that have kept level heads through all type of situations, and they're going to be missed, sorely missed. Uh, Madam President, uh, Councilman Banks, but I'm, I'm optimistic. We got two bright-eyed and shiny-tailed council folks getting ready to come in now, and these folks are excellent. They're excellent. Together, Madam President, hopefully, we can put together that team that you'll be proud of, uh, and we can work with the new incoming administration to get stuff done. So, uh, thank you for your service, uh, Mr. Banks, Ms. Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
She had a comment there.
Mr. Brazil?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, can Sabrina Shelby please stand? Sabrina is one of our chief deputy clerks, and the mayor always teases me because he says, you know, you love, you love all these initials behind your name. I love anybody with initials behind their name. And so this week, Sabrina earned her International Institute of Municipal Clerk certification. She, this is an international certification, so she will graduate this summer with her local and her international certification. The C M C program is designed to enhance the job performance of the clerk in small and large municipalities, and to earn this C M C designation, a municipal clerk must attend extensive education programs. And I think this is what, three years, four years, if you do it, and she can take this anywhere. And, uh, Sabrina, we're very proud of you. You joined the band. I know Angela has her I M C, uh, Shanika has hers, and so you, you joined the band of very highly qualified clerks, and we appreciate you for your work. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, I would just like to say thank you to you and to, uh, Councilman Banks and to Mayor Lamumba for taking me in the last eight months. I've learned a lot, and I'm going to miss you guys, and thanks for your leadership.
Thank you. We appreciate you. All right, anything else? Well, I just want to thank everyone for their kind words, and, um, we are at, we, um, you'll learn, you know, even though you may fight, you, you are a team. I mean, that old thing of blood is thicker than water, it's holds true for the city council. And so, um, I've enjoyed getting to know and work with every one of you, and, uh, my heart is full. So, thank you. All right, Mr. Banks, I dare you to cry.
Nah. Uh, yes, sir. Look, um, this has been, you know, I, I know people will say what they say, but this has been, I believe, for all of us that have served this past term, a successful term, and the past two terms have been successful terms. Uh, you know, I think one of the things that has to be said is that during these past eight years, this city has faced stuff that I don't think any other municipality had to face, and we all had to try to deal with it. We all didn't see it clearly all the time, but at the end of the day, we got through it, and we maintained, and the ship didn't sink. You know what I'm saying? And so, um, you know, I, I'm just thankful. Uh, I appreciate all y'all. You know, Mayor, I appreciate you. Dr. Murray, I appreciate you. I think when I started out in this, you was more of a mama, and you was fussing a whole lot, and sometimes you look at me with them eyes like you want to fuss, you know, but, uh, that's another story. Yeah, 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 like she doing that, but I want to appreciate. Uh, but, you know, guys and, and to the council coming in, the most important people to this institution and to this body are the clerks. They're the clerks. I just, I just want to say that. You know, Shanika, because this is the first council that had to deal with that transition from going from there being an office of the city clerk to a dividing up, and Shanika, you came in and you took this bull by the horn. Sabrina, you came back, and then Alice, Kathy, I'm talking about, y'all, y'all are some hard, come on, where, where, Brian, I was, oh, she out there outside. Val, you know, uh, but these clerks have done your job, and I just pray you all continue to hang in there and do what you do best. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Well said, and I, I was going to wrap up by saying thank you to the, the clerks. I mean, you have seven bosses, most of you, and I don't know how you do it every day, and you have been so remarkable and have made my time on this council manageable and doable, and you've always got my back, and so thank you for that. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, so I'll take the opportunity to say, uh, some closing words. First and foremost, uh, to council members, uh, I thank you for your service. Uh, this work is not for the faint at heart. Um, and so, uh, thank you for signing yourself up, uh, to, to be public servants. Um, I'll just be very quick as it relates to me. Uh, I'll just simply say that this has been the professional honor of my life, and I'm grateful for that. I'll use the remaining portion of my time to address my team. You are what I'm going to miss most. I've loved every day working with you. my team. You are what I'm gonna miss most. I've loved every day working with you. Through all of the hard work, having a team that I knew I could depend on, and I never had to question your sincerity. I never had to question whether you were giving me counsel because of some personal motive or agenda, but instead having the peace of mind that everything that you were offering me was for the benefit of Jackson. You are not only outstanding representatives for the city of Jackson, you are amazing people, and I thank the Lord for having this experience. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, colleagues, I will now take a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of going into, to discuss going into executive session to discuss personnel matter and legal matters.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. We are now in closed session. If you are not relevant to these conversations that I just.